We're here for our weekly board session and it is Wednesday, March 7th, 2018. And we're in the Senate hearing room at 555 Court Street Northeast Salem. And if you will join us, we're going to start with our tradition of saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I so like doing that. It's a good day. Good morning, Mr. Latimer. Glad you could join us.
Chair, how are you?
I'm doing really well, since I get to do this, right? I even have, I forgot to open the meeting with the gavel this morning, so now we're officially open.
You're in big trouble now.
We have, nobody signed up for a public comment this morning, so we'll move right into our consent calendar, if you want to do that.
Yes, Chair Cameron, I make a motion, we approve our consent calendar this morning. On it is, under Finance, approve a quitclaim deed to convey real property tax ID R96489, located at 425 17th Street Northeast in Salem. Public Works received notice of a hearings officer decision approving a conditional use K17039 Hamlin and Aldridge Clerk's File 5740. Treasurer's Office, approve a resolution eliminating the Marion County Assessor's Office Manufactured Structures Division Change Fund of $75. Approve a resolution increasing the change fund at the Marion County Justice Court from $300 to $450. And approve a resolution establishing a petty cash fund in the amount of $50 in the Marion County Clerk's Office.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's done. Our first action item today is, under Business Services, to consider approval of Amendment Number Eight to the lease agreement with Downtown Storage and Warehouse LLC, to add $121,500 for the storage space located at 1005 Broadway Street Northeast. Larry is here to share with us about this.
Good morning, Commissioners. That's Larry Tilford, Facilities Program Manager for Marion County. And I'm here to discuss the renewal of the lease for the Downtown Storage Facility. A little over a year ago, I was asked by Jeff White in Finance to begin negotiations for this site because we had heard that there were going to be some significant changes to the scope of the, or the cost of the lease. So for the last year, I've been negotiating with the team that owns the property. And the last offer they made to me was to survey all of the facilities that are similar in size and in the same location, and then come up with an average cost. And whatever that amount was, he would reduce it by 10% and offer that to us as the new rate. So we surveyed 17 different properties, and they were all about $11 a square foot, reduced by 10%, and then adding about $500 of utilities onto that as the new negotiated lease rate. And I invited Mr. Burgess and Frank to join us this morning to discuss the reasoning for the storage in the facility and answer any questions that you might have about it.
Bill Burgess, County Clerk. We've been running this facility for more than the 14 years that I've been here. For all, just about every department in the county, we store records for short term and long term. Recently, we consolidated some of our space there. It used to be that we had some in one building and some on the third floor and another building of records that we were keeping from counties. And Frank runs back and forth between each department almost daily, picking up records and taking records back there, taking boxes there. We originally, before this big increase, we paid about 42 and a half cents a square foot, average. Now, that was 55 cents on the bottom floor and about 30 cents on the second floor. Some of the difference in that was that the bottom floors more temperature, has some more temperature-controlled rooms where we keep film and we keep some of our permanent records, like mortgage books, deed books, lien books, and some other types of things that we're keeping in the forever status. We have a lot of boxes in there, though, that we have from different departments. There sometimes are only in there for six years or 12 years. And we've got some that are in there for 99 years. And so it, I think the county must have thought that this was a very efficient way for us to store records in the past. We know times are changing and we're hoping to get to the spot where one day we can have most everything scanned and have digital records. That's not here yet. Right now, the official records are paper records or microfilm records. And so that's why we're so adamant in trying to control the temperature and humidity, at least for our microfilm and our permanent records. The increase, when Larry, it was a shocking number when Larry went to renegotiate this, but part of that is because of marijuana. And the marijuana storage throughout the county and throughout the state has changed the whole marketplace for storage facilities. And so even though we still got a rate under the marijuana rate at about 86.4 cents per square foot per month, it's still quite a huge increase. And Frank can talk to you about the movement of records in and out, the ways we might find to save some space. We know there are a couple of rooms, a couple of 800-square-foot rooms, that store some old machinery. Some of that machinery is filmmaking machinery that we've got because we used to make our own film, and we don't know if we'll have to ever go back to that again. We've got some election stuff from the polling days that we probably won't have to use, though every once in a while, we still get somebody at the legislature trying to push us back to the polling days, which was one of the reasons we had kept a lot of that equipment. But even if we get rid of those couple of rooms, especially the rooms you may have seen on the second floor there, that's still less than 10% of our square footage. So it would save us some, and possibly we'd be able to negotiate with the folks there, and they'll have to change the walls and change access and things like that, which would be an expense that we would have to negotiate. But there is a way that we could possibly get a little, you know, use a little less space there. Trying to get everything down into the first floor, though, is probably not doable unless some of the departments want to take a lot of their records and store them elsewhere. And Frank, you want to?
Sure. Hi, Frank Milton, Records Coordinator for the Clerk. Last year, we took in 1,585 boxes, and we destroyed 899.5. And I did a five-year thing to, you know, give you an idea of where we're at. 2016, we did incoming of 1,194 boxes, and then we destroyed 1,257.2. So I don't know how much further you want me to go, but that gives you an idea. There's, sometimes we destroy more, sometimes we intake more. So for the five years total, I have 6,661 boxes we took in, and we destroyed 5,350.7. So a thing that Bill and I have talked about of, if we wanted to reduce space, is a good thing to do is to digitize. And I would really focus on three of the larger departments that submit a lot of records to us. That would be the Health Department, District Attorney's Office, and Public Works, and actually, one other Sheriff's Office. We get a lot of records from those folks, and a lot of times, they're under the 99-year mark, and they can lie digitally until their final disposition.
Can we answer any questions about the lease itself?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you a question, but maybe you'll answer it.
No, I'm not gonna answer it. I'm gonna ask Frank if he can answer the question. I know there are requirements to hold records for certain periods of time.
Correct.
Do we have any records there that we hold longer than necessary?
There are several departments that are holding on to records that are, once I send for authorization, I don't get it back. So we are still holding on to several departments' records. There are...
Want to tell us who they are?
Well, there are, besides my boss, there's the Finance Department, and there's Legal Counsel, and there is one other, I'm trying to recall the other one off the top of my head, I can't recall it, but that's at least three of them.
And why do they tell you that they're, they don't want those records destroyed, even though they've been there for years and years and years?
Well, they want to utilize them for either doing some kind of research project, or in the case of Finance, they wanted to utilize those for their research project, and same with my boss. And Legal Counsel, I, I'm sorry, I can't answer what Legal Counsel's reasoning is yet. They're, I think they have some things that are legal that they want to hold on to, and I would defer to legal.
Mr. Chair, this, it really is, one of the reasons I put this on the action item today...
Glad you did.
Is because we really need to get to a records management system. I have had some arguments with some of those departments that Frank mentioned about why they need to keep those records forever, even though the law doesn't require them to keep them. So I'm going to continue to talk about that, because it costs us money to store them. The other thing is, I don't really know why we're not getting rid of that equipment. I understand there's even furniture in there. So I understand wouldn't necessarily get rid of a floor, but at least you would keep, at least have room for future storage.
And yes, there's some of that equipment that we can get rid of, some that we can't. We've got some high-speed scanners that we've got out there now that we used to use for ballots that are still useful some, for some other projects out there, but there is other equipment there that we've, can certainly get rid of to get more space. We could also, and we've talked in the past about going to a different type of model for managing our archive facility. Like Clackamas County charges, I think it's a dollar per square foot per each department for their boxes that are in the facility, maybe as an inducement to share the cost around, and an inducement for maybe people to think about moving things out that don't need to be there anymore. But I think our thought was always that, well, it's a general fund expense anyhow, and it was just simpler to just have the Clerk's Office, have it in the Clerk's Office budget to pay for it, which we do now. It's, for the most part, it's all general fund money that pays for that facility.
So, I was gonna say, Mr. Chair, but I guess that's my title today, huh? John, my question is, is are we, are we doing anything, I mean, on the, on the, when you look at our total budget, this is a drop, but it's still a lot of money that we're storing paper. Are we, do we have an IT project to try to move this forward planned, or by one department at a time, or what's the, what's the general thought with trying to get to scanning things versus?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we have a plan. Unfortunately, it's full of very expensive things that we have to do first. It's, we will eventually get to that, but right now, we have a system that needs to be upgraded across the board. We have a lot of end-of-life equipment in our IT system, and we're gonna, you'll see in my next budget how expensive that is.
Okay.
It really is something, though, and Bill has pushed this, and so has Frank. It's really something we need to do, but we've never really had, it's a very expensive thing to do, several million dollars to do a document management system. So we've got it in the plan, but it's out a few years.
And then just some technical questions on the lease. It looks like the lease was from February 1st, 97 through 99, so we've been just going month to month, it looks like, in this...
This is, this is the eighth renewal of the...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So this one goes through the 21, year 21?
Correct.
You have anything to say about the marijuana that's driving the prices up of all this stuff?
No, no, I don't, but I do have a couple of comments. First of all, get the furniture out of there, clean up the space, make it more available for what's coming in, because I, it sounds like we're not going to be digitally changing things for a while. Files are a problem. I was just thinking, as you're talking, I looked just recently at my own, and I have, I have, it's about this thick in my files on garbage company insurance records, and I'm, from 1980. Well, yeah, you probably should just throw them away, but what if? What if there's somebody who wants to know? And so they're still there.
Wouldn't you tell them to go through the garbage can and find them?
Go through the recycling, but we know that's not moving. I do have a little, couple of little questions for, well, for Frank, perhaps. They sound like it's all important for heating and atmospheric controls, so do we have a backup system for power outage or anything to make sure that's maintained? And that'd be another thing that ought to be looked at.
Not to my knowledge that our landlord has a second backup for what we have. We do have three air conditioners going in the front end of that bottom floor that helps keep the historical records in books that we have.
Yeah, but if power goes out, you're kind of done, and they're all destroyed. So we need to have some backup.
They can survive for a little while, but if it really gets to be a bad thing after several days, then it can be a problem.
All right. And then just for you, Frank, the access, just a pure physical location, is it acceptable? Nobody's talked about that, that it works out real well for...
It works out really nice for us. It's just down the way here off of Broadway, and so it's within five-minute distance for me to go and pick up stuff and...
Easy in and out and this sort of thing?
Easy in and out. I do have a double-door lock, though, and it's nice to, nice, secure building.
And security, you said that, but there was just a case, I don't know, it seemed like it's Clackamas, but I don't know that, somebody had records stolen that shouldn't have been just in a storage unit, and...
Yeah.
...but it's a bunch of great, but it's secure, too. That's what you're telling us. Pretty good.
If somebody wants to get to something, I'm sure that they're gonna try and find some way of getting there. But it's a pretty good building.
Okay.
If I may speak, the last time we renewed the lease, we did work with the owner, and we had our risk management people there, looking at hardening the facility to make sure at least our records were stored properly. The Department of Justice was also interested in that, the State Department of Justice, because of the records that we keep there. And this is also a backup facility for us, part of our coop plan. If case we, the Clerk's Office needs to operate out of there, it can. It would take a lot of moving of things, but we've got, we've got some internet there, and we're going to try to supply that with more other computers and things like that so that we could, in case we got knocked out of this building, we would be able to work over there in an emergency for a short period of time.
Got that much room?
Well, if you move some furniture out.
Yeah. Well, you just turn them up. Never mind. Use the desk. All right. You want to make a motion? I think, unless there's anything else, John, you...
Chair Cameron, I would make a motion, we approve the Amendment Number Eight to a lease agreement with Downtown Storage and Warehouse LLC, add $121,500 for the storage space located at 1,005 Broadway Street Northeast.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item is with Public Works, and I believe Brian is here. Consider approval of incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for Corden Road and Hayesville Drive project for $562,265.32. That's the really important part. Brian, thanks for being here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Oregon, ODOT's All Roads Transportation Safety Program provides grant fundings for counties and cities to make improvement, safety improvements on their transportation systems. Marion County has received seven of these grants totaling, well, close to $3 million in all. This morning, I'm to present some information about one of those projects. It's the Corden Road at Hayesville Drive project. So this map gives you an idea of some of the safety improvements that have been going on over the years, recent years, on Corden Road, plus some upcoming projects. Back in 2015, we did a federal aid project to add left-turn lanes on Corden Road, turning onto Indiana and Carolina Avenue. This, this summer, we have another project that will install centerline rumble strips throughout the Corden Road corridor to improve safety on, from that aspect as well. And that is one of the arts projects. So you've seen the grant funding application or the funding agreement for that come through previously. And there are four more that are on the horizon. Hayesville Drive is one of those, and it is a project to add a left-turn lane northbound on Corden Road. So northbound drivers turning off of Corden onto Hayesville would have a left-turn refuge. And it'll look very similar to what you see at the Indiana and Carolina Avenue intersections. There's three others that are, that are visualized for the corridor. Development up along Cale, planned development along Cale is going to push traffic counts there to the point where left-turn lane is warranted on Corden as well. So we're anticipating that sometime between now and 2021, maybe concurrent with the Hayesville Drive project, there'll be a left-turn lane project coming in there as well. And we have two others visualized, one for Ward Drive and one for Heron Road. Those are not yet funded, but they're on our watch list, so we'll be looking for grant opportunities for those as well. So it gives you an idea of what's, what's happening on the corridor recently and upcoming. This project is the Corden Road at Hayesville Drive project, and this aerial view gives you just a snapshot of what this concept looks like. Right now, Corden Road is one southbound lane and one northbound lane, no median, just centerline stripe. We would come in and widen the pavement to the east, maintaining a bike, the bike lane that is there, and we'd put a striped median turnpocket there, with some minor improvements on the Hayesville side as well. These are two snapshots from the Indiana and Carolina Avenue intersection, so this gives you a pretty good idea of what the results will look like. Traveling public will see similar kinds of construction impacts. You know, this was built by widening to the north only, which was nice, because we were able to accommodate two lanes of traffic. We just shifted over. You know, take, take the bike lane and shift traffic over, put a row of barrier or barrels, and the contractor can work outside of traffic. Same construction method would be used at Hayesville as well. And this gives you just a brief snapshot of the project overall. The grant funding is 562,000 approximately. That requires a 7.78% match for a total project budget of 609,700. That match percentage is fairly low, and that's the way the arts program is built. We'll make that match just with our donated county labor with design and construction oversight. And this is the schedule for the project. This is, the, the design is scheduled to begin during the 2018 federal fiscal year, so at the start of our fiscal year, we'll start design and permitting. And ODOT has, you know, they phase out the funding for these projects. Construction funding is scheduled for approval at the end of the 2020 federal fiscal year, so that puts us into construction in the summer of 2021. Any questions I can answer for you?
If I can.
Yes, go ahead.
So a few years back, at SCATS, a local traffic committee, they had the recorded traffic accidents here in the Salem metro area. And Corden Road, to my surprise, was number one by far. So the projects we've done, the ones you have planned, and this one in particular, I'm all in favor for, but I, my question, and I don't know if you know this, Brian, have they already, have those numbers gone down? Are you seeing, it certainly looks like a safer deal than trying to dart across to make a left turn, especially onto that one-lane road, so I'm, I'm hoping it's working.
Well, I don't have the traffic data. Our traffic engineer could probably give you an update if you're, if you'd like to know information, more information about that.
No, I'm just assuming it's gotta be better.
Yeah.
It's surprising to me, and this is where we're having our trouble on Corden.
I think that would be a good note to make for our, is it our quarterly update we're doing on roads and bridges now with Public Works? That'd be a good statistic to probably kind of keep an eye on if we can get that report.
Absolutely.
If you participate in those, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll add that to our agenda.
If these are making a difference, is what your point is on, and how's that measured? Is that by miles traveled on the road and accidents?
That was just number of accidents recorded in a, in a given area.
As a percentage of cars, yeah.
Yeah, the arts program, ODOT uses what's called a jurisdictionally-blind distribution method. So they actually look at the traffic data and accident history in determining those locations across the state, state highway, as well as county and city roads, and they put the dollars where the accidents are.
That's why we're getting this.
That's right.
You know, I would have thought, this was my thought, the Lancaster one, they said, what do you think's the worst here? And I would assume Lancaster, it's the one I look, like to drive the most.
Well, you know, when the traffic moves really slow, you'd have fewer accidents.
Seems like you see them all the time.
It's just always congested.
But Corden, you know, it's a growing area, and 55 miles an hour in most areas, and then everybody cutting off different ways. We've tried to do different things, and then it goes, but we want that to be our bypass, you know? And yet, we've put new stoplights. Maybe they slow it down, but that's the whole thing. It breaks the idea of trying to have one place you could get from A to B. But anyway, I'm glad you're doing it.
Brian, any plans for roundabouts on Corden Road?
What are you trying to do?
Not on my project list at the moment.
Just so they can sell marijuana on the circle.
I tell you, I'm really good at getting through roundabouts now.
Yeah.
No.
Mr. Chair, I think roundabouts would be a great way to go. They really move traffic well, yeah.
Keeps the traffic flowing, I know, but we just need to get Sam out there with the driver to teach him how to do it.
It speeds it up, but I won't take that one in Kaiser, since that nasty Kaiser lady honked at me. That was, that was horrible.
All right. Anything else? Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
All right, Chair Cameron, I make a motion, we do approve the incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for Corden Road at Hayesville Drive project for 562,265.32.
And I'll second the motion. And Brian, thank you for a great presentation. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Just wish it was happening faster than 2021.
Yeah, I thought the same.
But maybe it will, who knows? Okay. Next on our agenda, and Lori is here with us from the Treasurer's Office, consider approval of general banking services contract with US Bank National Association for $240,000 to provide general banking services to the county through June 30th, 2024. Lori, welcome.
Good morning, thank you very much. Lori Steele, Marion County Treasurer, and as you indicated, I am here to ask for your approval for a new contract with US Bank. We've been with US Bank now for, I believe, the last five years, four or five years. And as our contract was getting ready to expire, I was looking at doing a new RFP, and both Finance and IT asked me to look at other options because of our upcoming Oracle upgrade that we'll be doing the next couple of years. And it can take one to two years to change banks if we wanted to do that. So there wouldn't be a way to be changing banks in the middle of an Oracle upgrade. So I was looking at our options, and I found that the city of Salem had recently entered into an agreement... the City of Salem had recently entered into an agreement with US Bank. Their contract that they have was actually a much better contract than we had, and we had one of the best in the state with US Bank. City of Salem did even a little better than we did in our last negotiations. So, it would be in our interest to piggyback onto the City of Salem's contract that they have with US Bank. And their contract runs through June 30th of 2024. So, that's the contract I'd like to be using. Can I answer any questions for you?
I'm just looking at the city. Do you have-
Well, I was trying to find, Lori, so what is the savings or difference that-
It's hard for me to calculate what our annual savings would be, but I am estimating, because this doesn't include the lockbox that we use for tax services. So, I would estimate that it could be as much as $5,000 a year that we'll be saving with this new contract. One of the things that is better than we have today is actually what they're paying us in interest, almost, for keeping our money in the bank. That rate will go up, which means we will keep less money in the bank to pay, to cover our services, and those funds can then be invested at a higher rate. So, that's where a lot of the savings will come from, is being able to leave a lower balance in the bank.
So, that's what I was looking for, Lori. Where's the, where's the interest rate that they're gonna pay us? And my concern is, is the, the flexibility in that interest rate, or is it fixed?
Sure. My current policy, the contract that we have, and actually, to look through this entire thing and find that right now, Commissioner Cameron, I'm not sure, I can point to the page for that right off the bat, when we have several hundred pages here. But our current contract we've had with US Bank had a cap of 0.75% interest that they would, the bank pays us for the money we have in the bank. The new contract has a floor of 0.75, and it can go up from there. The one we have today is just 0.75 all the time. It won't go up or down. Rates are rising, so this gives us the ability to have our rate go up with the rest of the rates that are going up.
That answered, that's a good enough answer for my question. In other words, we have a floor of 0.75 now, and it'll only go up and, as rates go up. That's-
Yes.
So, if I can interrupt, so can we ask for that interest rate review and ask for an increase?
Absolutely.
Or do we discount on them to do it whenever they think?
No, I have a quarterly review with my bank partner. My banking partner comes and meets with me. If he doesn't bring up rising, raising that rate, and I always do, we look at what they're paying other local governments and what the current rate is, what I can get for my money if I invest it elsewhere. So, we will always have those discussions, at least quarterly.
Okay.
So, I'm looking at the relationship manager on the signature page, and I can't read it. It looks like Scott.
It is, Scott Smith is his name.
Maybe they should print that as well as sign it. I'm good.
I think I am, too.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
Lori, what's the, what's the rate being paid in the-
LGIP.
Yeah.
It's 1.85 today.
Yeah.
They have a lot of investments that are floating rate investments, so they reset based on the LIBOR rate, which is what one bank pays to another. So, they're, I believe they are currently the highest in the United States, Oregon's LGIP.
So, it's, the more we can put in there, the better.
Exactly.
1.85, hmm, big nut. All right, ready for a motion, if you're ready.
I am. Chair Cameron, I make a motion that we do approve a general banking, banking services contract with US Bank National Association for $240,000 to provide general banking services to the county through June 30th, 2024.
I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Lori, thank you very much for what you do to keep our money secure and earning some interest. Excuse me. The citizens' money secure. All right, that is our business of the day. And I've been thinking about what I'm gonna do with this calendar. Am I chair next year, potentially? Well, that's assuming.
We'll discuss it.
That's assuming I'm still here, right? Okay, so-
I think we get at least two votes.
Remember that.
Yeah, okay, I got an idea with this. Next year. All right, so I'm gonna read the calendar where we're gonna be in the next week or so. Kristi, you do a good job keeping this up to date. And for those people watching, you can always look at this on our webpage, right? So, today at noon, Wednesday the 7th, we'll be at Woodburn Marion County Meeting at Luisa's Taqueria at 523 Front Street, Woodburn. Great food. Tomorrow, 3:08, at 7:30, we have our monthly Kaiser Marion County Meeting. Location is at Sherry's Restaurant at 4998 River Road North in Kaiser. And also on the 8th, Thursday at 10 o'clock, we have a work session here to review our economic development program and budget. I'm looking forward to that. That's upstairs in the Silverton Conference Room. Also on the 8th, Thursday, Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council Planning Meeting, and that's upstairs at the Silverton Conference Room. Also on the 8th, really? Can we get all that in on the 8th? Thursday at 5:30, we have our Jefferson Community Forum at the Jefferson City Hall at 5:30. Friday the night, we have at 11:45, our Silverton Community Forum. Location is at the Silverton Hospital in their conference room above the Birth Center. On Monday the 12th, at 8 o'clock, we have Association of Oregon Counties, pretty much all day. Legislative Committee and Board Meeting. Location is at the Local Government Center, 1201 Court Street Northeast. On Tuesday the 13th, 7:30 a.m., we have the State and Marion County Meeting. Location at the Covered Bridge at 510 North 3rd Avenue in Stateon. Good chicken fried steak. On Tuesday the 13th, at 9 a.m., calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room here in the fifth floor. On Tuesday the 13th, at 9:30 a.m., a work session on solo arrays update here in the Silverton Conference Room. On Tuesday at 4 o'clock, the 13th, Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, Commissioner's Board Room on the fifth floor. Didn't I just say that? Wait a minute.
Or is that with the planning?
It's the planning meeting, okay. Well, Commissioner Carlson's got all these on my schedule, and I get confused now. I'm going to so many meetings there. So, that is at 4 o'clock on Tuesday the 13th, here in the Commissioner's Board Room. On Wednesday, we are back here for our board session at 9 a.m., and then also at 2 p.m. We have a one-on-one with our department head, Alan Haley, in Public Works here in the Silverton Conference Room. Well, we're back in a busy week.
If I can, a couple things. One, Jefferson, I'm gonna do a ride-along prior to that meeting, and I was thinking, so what happens?
Sheriff.
Yes, but what happens if he has to head to Salem or something? So, I'm just gonna have him drop me off on the street, and I know you'll pick me up. Is that right?
So-
You wouldn't?
So, you're doing a ride-along prior to that?
Yes, I thought it would all, it'll work out wonderfully if nobody calls with troubles.
Is that tomorrow?
Thursday, yes.
Okay. Absolutely, I'd pick you up.
All right.
But if I was you, I'd rather be in a sheriff car, get escorted down there. In fact, I'd bring you back here if, if he drops you off there.
We'll see what happens.
You can post that.
I'm hoping nothing.
He's gonna do a ride-along with the other county commissioner.
And then, that meeting itself, and then Silverton, and I just wanna comment a little bit. Silverton in particular, the cities that I dealt with was, was and is terribly involved, excited about recycling, have been for 30 years. So, I know this current news on, on cutting, trying to clean up, the recycling is gonna come up. But, maybe just to take this opportunity, and that's all the, we've been fighting for a number of years, products that never were recyclable being put in there. For a long time, China in particular, and different people, organizations that sort these materials have kinda dealt with them, but it's just gotten so bad, the market for the base materials isn't enough to carry it, and they say no more. So, this may be temporary, but I, I think not, and I think we're really gonna have to make some efforts to clean it up, to get back on the track that, that I wanna be, and I think all the people in Marion County. But we're gonna, we'll hear, hear about it in Silverton. How come? Why? What can we do? And the best thing to tell people right now is just get it cleaned up. If it's clean commodity, it can be sold and reused. If not, it, it's collected, it's taken by the public to a spot, hauled, sorted, not sorted good enough, taken to the final market, and then disposed of. So, we need to streamline the process.
I saw there was an opinion piece in today's paper.
There's a couple, actually, yeah.
Right? About, in the States Journal, about everybody's responsible for what we've got going on. Let's see, the week the legislature adjourned, that's good news. Why are you laughing?
Voice good, yeah.
Yeah, peace and quiet.
But in the last day, we actually got amendment into a House bill over on the Senate side, and came back over to the House and concurred, and we got our fixes in there for our economic development bill that, that we were gonna push forward on anyway. So, we got those fixes done. That was really a good thing. No other county has implemented this yet, and hopefully Marion County will be the first to put this together and try it out, where we can actually do industrial development in, in certain areas to, to help with property tax relief, to get people to make investments. So, that'd be great. Got that done. What else happened?
Well, I wanna-
Oh, we got the 8 million, yeah, talk about that.
Well, I don't, well, I'm sure we'll make a bigger announcement some, somewhere, but I just saw this come through, like 8.3, 8.2 million dollars for bridge upgrades in Mill City, the main bridge going into town that's been load limited for most of a decade, and a railroad bridge that they wanna make for a footbridge that the local community's been working for a long time, and I believe some other sewer infrastructure things. It's pretty big news, anyway.
Yeah, for that community, for the whole, for the whole canyon. That's a great-
It probably isn't the one you would've preferred, but we'll keep working on the other in terms of the sewer. I had a-
Well, it's good that we got the, if we can get that bridge restored to where trucks can go across it, you know, because they still got those two mills over there that need that.
Let's keep them going.
Right.
I had lunch with Chuck Bennett yesterday, and he has a house there at Gates and involvement in the community. And he said, actually, as far as he and his neighbors are, it's water in the area that they have the biggest trouble with. Arsenic is a huge issue in the-
In their wells, yeah.
And so, there's lots of work that could be done, but this is, this is a pretty big boost in one area.
Yeah. And then, just to anybody who's watching on TV, if you wanna go out and get some plants this weekend, the Marion County Water and Soil Conservation District is having their annual plant sale Saturday. So, I got to attend their annual meeting, and I think that was a couple of weeks ago, and they announced that, and I just wanna pass that on. It's one of their fundraisers they do, and they do great things throughout Marion County with the conservation and water and soil. I think that's all I've got.
That's probably-
I'm hungry for some Luisa's Taqueria this afternoon.
You know-
John, you want me to-
As you're reading this, just so you know, about everything, some kind of food meeting. I don't know if I'm causing that, but it certainly explains-
Oh, that's what I did yesterday.
Explains what I look like.
I went to the Health Advisory Board, and you might wanna go to that meeting once in a while. It's a quarterly, or every other month, but they serve lunch.
See?
Sam, so you can go for me. With that, we are gonna adjourn this meeting.